Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council Meeting of November 6, 2023, to order. Mr. Franciac, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Ms. Moulton, can you hear us?
Oh, could you not hear me?
Yeah, we got you now.
Oh, sorry. Thanks.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Heubik.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, would you please join me in the pledge? Okay, first item announcements and committee reports. I've got a few. I'll try to go through them quickly because we've got a lot on the agenda tonight. So I'm glad to see the clocks have been appropriately moved back, so everybody's here on the right time. Tomorrow is Election Day, or I'd like to say the last day. You can turn in your ballots because the election's been going on for a while, but 8:00 PM you can drop your ballots off as long as they're in the ballot box north side of the library here in Anacortes or on Sands Way. So they have to be in by 8:00 PM. Next, North Star. I know council's asked, we've talked about North Star every now and again. At the request of a number of mayors and the leadership team, we have asked that all the minutes of those meetings just get sent directly to the council. So just for council's information, you should be starting to see those minutes from those North Star meetings. If you've been out driving around, you've probably seen that the R Avenue detour is in place and the work is getting started in earnest on the roundabout on R Avenue. So the detour takes you around T. So again, hoping that'll wrap up within a couple of months. I think we gave the contractors 50 or 60 days. So should be quick, but always there's a little bit of inconvenience when you're doing road projects. This Friday is the celebrated Veterans Day. It's the 10th Veterans Day is the 11th. City Hall will be closed on Friday, but there will be an event at the Port Transit Center at 11:00 for celebrating Veterans Day. And that, I think, is all the announcements that I have. Next for is 3A is Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Fiber Committee met last week, and let's see, I'll just quickly hit some numbers, and also there's some info on construction for the EDA space. So we have now surpassed over right around 2,150 customers on net, which is a fantastic number. Each of the zones have exceeded 35%. Actually, the basically Gwimus View is now up to 43.2% signups, which is great. Citywide, we're at 46.4% signups, so also a very good number. On the EDA construction itself, it's all targeted for like kind of 2024, 2025, kind of beginning February, March, and divided into four sections. So the first section is Cap Santi and kind of the basin around Cap Santi. Section two is the kind of larger one that's sort of everything H Avenue and west, and I guess south of 22nd. And then section three is the sort of far southeast corner, kind of between A and H Avenue. And then finally, kind of filling in between 22nd and D Avenue, all the way through kind of the north end of the Gwimus View. So those are going to come in about like four to six month increments. So I think we'll start seeing turnups latter half of 2024 in around that Cap Santi area, and then rolling from there every four to six months.
All right. Thanks. Next up, Housing and Affordability and Community Services Committee Report. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So we had a meeting on October 25th. Council members Walters and Moulton were there along with staff. And so we had a really great conversation, both the Salvation Army, Brett Harrison, who's working there now, and also AFC with Nina Lundston. We had a really good conversation regarding the cold weather shelter and what our plans are for this upcoming year. We've got a number of different avenues, but it's also pretty complicated when you talk about the programming component of a cold weather shelter. So what Salvation Army had explored the idea of having a severe cold weather shelter at their facility, but that probably is not feasible for this winter, hopefully maybe in the near future. So we talked about how we can make sure our dollars and our vouchers go as far as possible when it comes to the winter season and folks who need those services. The Family Center has certain available nights. The city subsidizes some of those available nights, and then also the Salvation Army has access to vouchers. They all fall under different parameters, so piecing it together is pretty complicated. But I was really pleased to see the different providers all on a call together figuring out how we can create stopgap measures when it comes to this winter and folks. The Senior Center, we also had Eric Johnson on there, a former council member, and he talked a little bit about, we were talking about the Senior Center is considering a hot weather shelter as we're seeing the temperatures rise in the summer and the number of folks having to go to the emergency room. We don't have those numbers. We would like to see those come forward, but having air conditioning for folks who need it with extreme temperatures is something that we are going to continue to explore. We also, Stephanie Snyder was able to attend the Community Development Block Grant Conference in Walla Walla. It was both local and national, and she was able to get a better grasp. She's new at the job in the last year, so she was able to get a better grasp of the complicated reporting and also the opportunities associated with those program, that program, and how entitlements work. So that was helpful. And then finally, I think that was about it. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, next up is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM today. Council members Young, Walters, and myself with Public Works staff. And we spent the bulk of our meeting talking about the parking code and doing some review of certain areas that have been brought up by constituents as areas of concern. For example, near the Gwimus Ferry, with driveways being blocked, a couple places out towards Skyline and Washington Park. And so there were seven total. So we talked that over with staff, looked at maps, and we have a little more information to gather. And once we do that, we will bring our recommendations forward to full council to talk with everyone about those. We discussed the consent agenda item tonight that is the R Avenue Long Term Improvement Project Materials Testing, and that is required by WashDOT. So the things that we use that we put in the ground need to be tested. So that's what that item is about. And then next week, we will see the AMI antenna poles contracts coming to us. And those are four poles that will go up around the city, and they will help us monitor the meters all around town from inside City Hall. So that's been an ongoing project. And the whole project, this part of it at least, will be about $300,000. The good news is that was the estimate four years ago, was $300,000. So that's pretty remarkable. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Next is Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Young.
Mayor Miller. Thank you, Mayor Miller. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on October 26. It was a very productive meeting in that we discussed all the, well, we discussed all of the proposals because we have some proposals that were presented, and it was just an initial review of that. We also talked about our strategic plan for how to move forward, the vision for going forward. And then additionally, the bulk of our discussion was surrounding event space. And that discussion of the need for the community and the urgency of trying to decide how and what we would do by way of event space and looking at the various proposals. We did have a presentation by one of the entities that submitted a proposal, and we have others that are coming forward about the event space. The goal with that is simply to holistically look at all of the options that we have on the table, choose the best option to give the greatest service to the citizens. We all agreed that needing an event space that can host, you know, 300-plus people is essential. And so it is an urgent matter, and so the LTAC Committee leaked in, and we're reviewing those items. There are some challenges we're trying to work through, and I think that those would come up at further discussions at the LTAC Committee. But also, I'm sure as we may have an open discussion with council members participating in the sense of trying to determine what do we need, how do we need it, and if it is possible for us to ensure everyone has an equal chance at using the facility, and how would that work within the realms of the law. So, you know, it was a very wonderful discussion, and I look forward to the next phases. And I'll have more information as we continue to review the applications about the event space as well as the other applications for events across our area. So that's the bulk of the report for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Parks and Recreation Committee. Did we have a Parks and Rec? Uh, Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. The Parks and Rec Committee met on October 25, and we talked about that FEMA funding that we are hoping to get, and different ideas about how that can be used to meet a lot of the city needs across various departments, but hopefully parks included in that list. Let's see, my notes are not fabulous. We talked about the budget for parks, which we will get into here at council in more detail very soon. We discussed our desire to move forward with the Gwimus Channel Trail and then necessity of doing an environmental impact statement for that, for the entire length, before we can even move forward with different chunks of it. Rough, rough estimate is that it would cost $400,000 to do an environmental impact statement. Maybe we could get that, take that money from REIT or, you know, different areas. We just kind of broadly spoke about that, but how important it is to us to move forward. The Washington Park restroom contract is on our agenda tonight. And we discussed having a police officer in the ACFL during the very busy summer months when sometimes there are, there are things going on out there that are illegal or potentially dangerous, and the importance of having police representation out there. And of course, the good news there is that we are hiring five new police officers in the coming year due to our levy lid lift being approved, and also eight firefighter paramedics, as we know, but I feel like it bears repeating. So we're really looking forward to having support for staff. And since the ACFL and parks in general are about a third of our entire city, it's just really important that we have, that those are safe places. And also briefly, we touched on the depot and the Senior Center price adjustment for people to rent out those spaces. It's been about three to four years since that's been looked at. So taking a look at that as well. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next up is Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Finance Committee met last week. It was Mr. Hoagland, Mr. Stefan, Chief Harris, and myself. First things, we primarily covered, we're, as you know, we're entering budget season, spoke about how sales and utility taxes have been flat year over year, and due to activities of the Fed and, you know, certain economic uncertainty for next year, the plan is to, you know, we're budgeting for a 10% drop in sales tax, just to be, you know, very cautious. And ultimately, that results in about a $650,000 reduction in revenue. However, with the levy lid lift and increased assessments, that means actually about 670K in property tax projected to come in next year. So that'll actually offset that sales tax drop. And we basically are projecting, you know, no program or headcount cuts, that kind of thing. So that's good news. We also spoke about FEMA replacement funds. Right now, it looks like it's going to be somewhere like right now about 4.2 million in funds coming in. Could be as high as six, but we're not planning on that. Discussed, you know, items under consideration, obviously, Parks Department stuff. FEMA does like to, they like it when you use the funds to purchase like a tangible object, that kind of thing. And it operates kind of like insurance, like a check from the insurance company. You don't have to fix your car, you can use it on something else. And so we're targeting maybe like ladder truck and four police vehicles, which would account for about 2.2 million of that, and still, you know, quite a bit left over for other purposes. Philip also provided a kind of a preview walkthrough of the Open Gov Budget Reports. And a request from the finance committee or department, if council has any specific departmental line that they'd like to discuss in more detail or have questions on, to, if possible, try to get those in ahead of time before we cover them at the meeting. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the good explanation on the FEMA money as well because that's, you know, we are counting on that money to balance the budget that staff presented to council a couple of weeks ago is balanced, but it is based on getting some help from getting that insurance check that we are counting on. Okay, any other announcements or committee reports?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The North Star Housing Work Group met earlier today. We revised some of the details about our jurisdictions identified public property. There are only three cities represented in the work group. Cedar Woolley is not at that work group. And that becomes relevant here in a second. We did discuss, because our jurisdictions simply do not have a lot of public property that can be made available for housing, whether we should bring other public entities into the discussion. And top of that list was ports. I was definitely supportive of that. The port is an integral player in, for example, the Olson Building that is one of our affordable housing sales tax projects. But also, the port of Skagit owns the former Northern State Hospital site, the Swift Center. And is there the potential for there to be housing developed alongside the light industrial that's going to be going there? Also, the port of Skagit is obviously a big player at Bayview Ridge. Bayview Ridge does not really have a residential, non-municipal urban growth area there, but it could, especially if it were high-density residential. And all of this plays into economic development because housing is where jobs go at night. And housing is a significant constraint on economic development right now. And then finally, SCOG asked the question of whether some of our jurisdictions may need to look at rezoning industrial land to allow residential as part of the comp plan update. And I think the answer from the jurisdictions represented was, yeah, maybe, maybe not. But as we recall, we are instructed by the state to accommodate a certain number of housing units at a certain, at all of the income levels, and it's going to be very difficult to achieve that. So we probably need to keep all the options on the table.
Any other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to item four. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda. I've got a few folks signed up, and I think at least one of them is signed up. It says Proposition Ordinance, and I think that's... Sorry, I'm having a hard time. Marqueitha, maybe? Okay. So if you can wait till we get to that subject, that's would be the appropriate time on that one. But first up, I've got Bill Turner. The topic is Fidalgo Landing. And we typically limit our comments to three minutes, but we won't start until you're ready. So, and Mr. Turner, if you could turn the microphone on to make sure we can hear you?
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Turner. I live in 2012.
A little bit closer to make sure.
Thank you, thank you. I live at 2012 I Avenue, Anacortes, and I'm here to make comments about the Fidalgo Landing project. Pretty brief, but I'm going to be watching this. Fidalgo Landing is the largest investment Anacortes has had from a private company since the oil refineries, which makes it the biggest permitting and planning challenge that I have seen in my 50 years here on Fidalgo Island. And I was on the council for eight years. MG has stated that it may invest $1 billion over 20 years at Fidalgo Landing, including perhaps 600 to 1,500 housing units with all the amenities, including restaurants, retail stores, et cetera. There is a lot the city does not know about this project, but needs to know to make clear-headed permitting decisions for Anacortes. We citizens also need to know, as this project will affect all of us for a long time. This project will happen, planned for and supported by city council. I'm not against this project, but I am skeptical of the traffic study and their narrative in the CIPA application. We need transparency and a clear path toward permitting, including citizen workshops and more public hearings. Please take your time to flesh out the project before issuing a DNS. Perhaps you might want an EIS. The council passed its housing action plan, this is housing that I'm particularly interested in. The council passed its housing action plan in January, mandating its completion of an affordable housing plan in six months. We're past that and no plan. I was vice president and president of Skagit Habitat for Humanity for four years, and working with plan and worked with plans, planning staff here since 2018, to follow state law and your own comp plan to promote affordable housing, affordable housing. In five years, little has been done. This process is a real opportunity to finish regulations on affordable housing, especially multiple family housing and require Fidalgo Landing to help, whether through their building or by tax or impact fees. Thank you for your efforts. I look forward to helping if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I have signed up Teresa Baker, and the topic is Little Cranberry Lake.
Good evening. Teresa Baker, 18/20/11. I am just here to make a comment about something that I have heard in passing, that Little Cranberry Lake is going to be open to a commercial endeavor, and that no public comment or any kind of notification has happened. What I heard was that there was going to be a dock built and a private entity was going to rent paddleboards for the lake. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I've heard. And if it is true, I think public comment is necessary. Thanks.
Thank you. I haven't heard of that, but we'll look into that. Next up is, I think it's, is it Dan Baker? Little Cranberry Lake? Dan Baker. Ditto. Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are great public comments. Any, I don't have anybody else signed up, but the, there's a budget review that's open for public comment, and they'll remind me to make sure I, and then the ordinance 4062 adopting point of officers. But anybody want to comment on anything else? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Oh, we also received a written public comment. I believe there are three written public comments that was added to the package. Item five, consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through E.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Heubik to approve consent agenda items A through E. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 6A, 6A is a continuation of our public hearing, just making an announcement. This is on revenue sources, including increase in the property tax levy. And if there's anybody that wants to comment on that, we're still going to keep that open. I don't believe, Mr. Hoagland, if we've received any written public comment since we opened that up a couple of weeks ago, but you still have an opportunity to comment on our revenue sources. Next up is item, so we're leaving that open. Item 7A, Other Business. This is Anacortes Waterfront Alliance Update. So we're happy to welcome to some guests, and I think Mr. South is going to introduce our guests.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the audience. We're going to do a present, well, I'm going to let Anacortes Waterfront Alliance do majority of the presentation. I will introduce them while we get our stuff rolling here. Just give me a second. All right, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance, several years ago, created a partnership to really expand boating and boating opportunities for the community of Anacortes. The Parks and Recreation Department started a sailing program back in 1997 with, I think, if I remember correctly, probably about 20 kids going through the summer sailing. It's grown since then. But in about 2010, we had some staffing challenges, had trouble getting instructors, had some turnover, started having conversations with the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance in about 2018, I believe. Formerly, they were the Anacortes Small Boat Center, and we worked out an agreement to be able to have them offer boating classes, sailing opportunities for kids and adults. And that program has really gone well. It's, like I said, provided access to the community to be able to use the great resource we have in Fidalgo Bay to offer boating. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elise Murphy and Mary Trussler.
All right. Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Miller and council members. We're so excited to be here. It's really a fun, fun, fun environment to see kids on the water. This is a couple of our instructors here that are in our new safety boat. So that was my first task as executive director, to raise funds for a $35,000 vessel. So I still have my job, therefore, you know, boating is critical to us and safe boating is the most important. Our mission is to enable meaningful interaction with our community's waterfront through the preservation of public access and the development of inclusive programs. And that is something that we really hold deep in our hearts, is to make sure that this waterfront is accessible to the many, and from scholarships to outreach countywide. We cannot do this without our critical partners and sponsors, of which the City of Anacortes, Anacortes Parks and Rec Department have supported us for many years, and we hope to continue that great partnership. It is my job to fill this entire screen with more logos and partners and sponsors as we grow this program. So AWA is small but mighty. We have about 1.75 FTE. These are three of our dynamic women here. Elise Satoni Haratani has been our head coach. We have an incredible board of 10, and numerous volunteers that come and help us on the waterfront. They were former sailors or current sailors or just want to be around the action on the waterfront. So super helpful. We cannot do it without all of that support. So this summer, we served over 300, directly serving 300 people on the water, from kids to adults. This is kayaking, sailing, paddle boarding, and just really instilling safety and fun. Elise, we'll talk a little bit later about bringing regattas here to the waterfront, but that brings us up to another 400. So we serve over 700 people on the waterfront in a given year, which is super exciting.
So through our partnership with the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance and the APRD, we're able to offer classes for eight-year-olds up to adults. I think our newest classes are Intro to Water Sports class, and that one, our youngest kids get to expose, get exposure to sailing, kayaking, stand-up paddleboarding, and through our partnership through APRD, we're able to make this a low barrier of entry class so that kids can see if they like to be on the water before signing up for our more sailing-intensive classes through AWA. Here's a little video of some of our beginner sailors out in the bay. It's really a unique sport, to be able to get that control, they're in their individual boats at, you know, nine years old, so it's really a lot of power and control that those
So as I mentioned earlier, outreach is one of our biggest objectives, and so we were able to, we were awarded the NCLI grant, which is No Child Left Inside. And we, our big motto is Hugamos en el agua, like, come play on the water. So this allowed us to provide outreach to a couple of areas on the East County. One was the Triumph Teen Life Center in Mount Vernon, so they just came and they just had a blast, they challenged themselves, they've been talking about it nonstop. I was just out there fundraiser on Saturday, and all the kids came up to me and they just were like, "We can't believe that we got to do that. Thank you so much. We look forward to next year and creating more partnerships." Another area that we had outreach with was an organization that was specific to migrant family children. And so both of those groups, we served 26 migrant family children on the waterfront this summer, and we will do that again next summer and have opportunities for growth. It's just simply from water exploration, discovering bulb kelp, and this is Leo, and I could not get him out of the water. He just wanted to float and just be at one with the water. It was so touching.
Yeah, so one of the other things that we offer in the summer is community boating rentals, so we can get people out in the water on stand-up paddleboards, kayaks, and sailboats to be able to experience the bay a little bit more close to there. And then one of our brand-new programs is our middle school sailing programs. We had so much excitement and growth in sailing, and so we wanted to get kids racing even earlier. We had 17 high, or middle schoolers this year, and they actually sail in single-handed sailboats against other middle schools around our area. And then our longest-standing program is the high school sailing team. We're now an official lettering and official high school sport, which is a really big deal for sailing in our community. They compete in the Nowissa racing circuit against teams from all over Washington and Oregon in double-handed flying junior sailboats. And then one of the really cool things about sailing is it's a true coed sport, so boys and girls compete against each other in same boats and some, same fleet, same team, so that's really a good thing for our school district as well. And then racing regattas, so every fall and spring, we host regattas for both the Nowissa and the middle school circuit. Last year, we had 60-plus boats in Fidalgo Bay for that regatta. We'll be hosting the Nowissa Fleet Race Championships this May, so there'll be lots of boats on the water, and funding's to come down and see in May.
One of our big and new events this summer was AWA's First Annual Fundraiser, and thank you, Anthony, for being there. This is just, it was such a fun event. We cheerfully raised funds, we cheerfully sent out our message, and we had an immersion suit race, entertainment, music, the whole nine yards. So save the date for July 6, 2024. We'd love to see you there. In short, Anacortes Waterfront Alliance is a nonprofit organization dedicated to waterfront access, preservation, and experience. Thank you, and thank you for your continued support.
Well, thank you so much, and again, the City of Anacortes is a proud partner with the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance, and we also thank the partners that, the other partners on that big support, because we know we can't do it without you, and being a maritime, maritime community, having the opportunity for folks to, that might not have a chance to experience any time on the water, that's, that's great. Counsel, any, anything? Mr. Walters?
I appreciate your emphasis and find it particularly heartwarming that you were able to provide such services to so many people of color, migrant families, children, and so many young women who maybe 30 years ago would not have been in such a group. I, I understand as well, though, that the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance and others who would benefit from having access to our cultural heritage on the water would benefit from additional facilities for that. And I would hope that we could engage in a community conversation with all the potential landowners where you might want to cite that and make some progress on that near term.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you know, it really is a wonderful thing to be able to introduce the enjoyment of the water to so many people. You know, our world is ever diverse, there's so many people moving from everywhere, and I just think it's a wonderful thing to introduce children to the enjoyment of the waterfront, because it's also helps us to be able to protect it, to understand why we need it, while we're working so diligently to keep it as pristine as possible so that we can continue to enjoy it. And I, I really want to thank the Waterfront Alliance for their hard work to do that. I've had so many of the board members reach out to me personally, so Mary and team, you guys are doing a great job, and I just wanted to applaud you again for the efforts that you're doing to make sure everyone, young and old, have a chance to learn about how to use the waterfront and sail and boat. So that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thanks again so much, and thanks for the pictures of all the sunshine. That's also nice and helpful. Okay, next up is item seven B. This is ordinance 4058. This is amending critical area regulations. This is a discussion item with possible action, and I know Ms. Swetnam will be presenting this one.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Sadly, I have no pictures of cute children outside on boats, but we'll do our best. Okay, so in your packet tonight and before you is ordinance 4058, and this is an ordinance that would amend the city's critical areas regulations pursuant to a settlement agreement from the Growth Management Hearings Board. So the city adopted ordinance 4025 on October 17 of 2022 in response to the Growth Management Hearings Board appeals proceedings brought by appellant Evergreen Islands. Part of the ordinance updated the language in section 1970040B that addressed exempt activities. Ian Muntz appealed this change to the Growth Management Hearings Board under case number The parties entered into a settlement agreement by which Mr. Muntz will withdraw his appeal once the city adopts the agreed-upon code update language. There was a hearing before the Planning Commission, and the commissioners recommended approval on September 27, 2023. Apologize for the line through the words there. So the, kind of the background here is that section 1970040 describes activities in critical areas or buffers that are exempt from the Critical Areas Regulations in Chapter 1970. Petitioner Muntz, in his appeal, requested that the city revert to the previous version of section 1970040B based on his analysis that it would better protect critical areas in Anacortes. So the, the argument was that the harm standard, which replaced the previous language saying that any disturbance in the area would be addressed in the section, is a higher threshold for city enforcement actions, as this associated code section prohibits the city from seeking court authorization to enter property or evaluate harm, and disturbance in most cases can be observed remotely. So his argument was that the, the previous language better protected critical areas, and, and the city agreed with that in the settlement agreement. So this is the, the proposed change in the ordinance, and this is the only subsection that's changed by the ordinance. You can see the, the strike, strike-out language is, is the, the proposed change, and so the last sentence would read, "In every case, disturbance to the critical area must be minimized through best management practices and the use of low-impact equipment." So staff is recommending approval. I know that petitioner Muntz is in the audience, and there were some comments that he provided from Fish and Wildlife, which were added to the packet for tonight as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Swetnam?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I understand this is pursuant to a settlement agreement, and although I was on vacation when that settlement agreement was approved, I assume that this language specifically is in the settlement agreement. Is that right?
It is, yes, correct.
Okay, so I think I understand the point about changing the word harm to disturbance. It does seem like it would provide greater protection, arguably. However, the next strike through would seem to provide less protection, and I, just for my edification, I wonder if you could clarify or explain, because under the existing code, it says disturbance, or it says harm, but it will say disturbance must be avoided, if possible, and minimized, and now it will say minimized and not avoided, and I, I consider avoid and then minimize part of the standard mitigation sequence, but avoid seems to provide better protection than minimize. So am I missing something there, or can you explain? Or can you explain how we got to this language?
Well, I think how we got to this language is this, this is what was there previously, and this was the change that petitioner Muntz requested and that the, the city agreed to. I mean, I'm, I'm certain we could, once we resolve this, you know, piece of litigation and dispose of this appeal, we could certainly engage with the petitioner and look at whether that change would be a, a good future change. But I think our recommendation at this point is to, you know, follow the terms of the settlement agreement, get, get this language in place. You know, I, I understand that argument that, that maybe having avoided in there as well could provide better protection, but I think the language that says disturbance to the critical area must be minimized through best management practices and the use of low-impact equipment. I think the, the point there is that would allow staff to observe activity within the critical area, even if they weren't on the property or didn't have access to the property, so.
Yeah, so I think I follow the logic from, the change from harm to disturbance, but the remainder, I guess, what I hear you saying is that is simply a reversion to what we previously had in code.
Exactly.
Even though it may not be the optimal language. I'm suggesting it's not the optimal language, but it's simply that reversion.
That's correct.
Okay, so then, then I understand why we're doing that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Swetnam? I said I appreciate the work Ms. Swetnam put in to negotiate the settlement language. Any other comments or maybe a motion, perhaps?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal.
If, no further comment, I guess I move we adopt ordinance 4058, amending the critical areas regulations as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McDougal and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve ordinance 4058, amending critical areas regulations as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleetham McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are on to item seven C, which could be why we have a good crowd, or it might be waiting for the next one, but we got the Public Works team and Money Steve here to talk 2024 budget review, and this is the Public Works, and this is a discussion item and open for public comment. Mr. Hoagland?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience, we are starting the second leg of our budget journey for 2024. We finished the CFP review for Public Works and General Government, so tonight we're going to start looking at the operating budget for Public Works. Wanted to just quickly go through the next steps of the budget, so tonight we have Public Works operating budget. Next Monday, we have the General Government operating budget review. The following, that puts us to the 20th, and I wanted to point out an, an error that I noticed on the budget calendar that's on the website, has the property tax levy ordinance listed as November 6, which is tonight. That's an error that'll be coming to council on November 20, and at that point, we are planning the public hearing to close that same night, then the ordinance for the property tax being presented to city council. That property tax ordinance is due to the county by November 30, and the overall budget is not required to be adopted until the end of the year. So those are the next steps for the, the next few weeks. So tonight, Director Rayum is going to walk us through the Public Works budget, and we have supporting staff, so hopefully any questions you have will be handled tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Andy Rayum, Public Works Director, and we have, what we plan to do is share, oh, is it right? Hold on just one second. There we go. So the way I wanted to do this was to present the operating budget as the public can see it from our website, so I just wanted to show real quickly, that is not what I want to show you, but if you go down to under Government, and you go to Finance, it's loading, and then you go to Budget, and then the online budget report under the 2024 budget, you click In here, so there's different ways to look at the budget. We're going to use the, the views, these have been set up by Finance to try to help. There's quite a few views in Public Works. This is a meaty agenda item. As you can see, we're going to go through Water Fund and go all the way down through street construction. So the neat part about this tool is it also shows you the capital facilities plan as well as the operating budget, so I'm going to touch on that as well. The grand total for Public Works for 2024 is about $64 million, which gives me a little pause there. That's, that's quite a bit of, of funds that you're trusting in the department, and just rest assured that we intend to be very frugal and careful with that responsibility, so with no further ado, my notes are six pages long, just to give you an idea of how long this is, so I'll probably stop in between different funds to check in on how you're doing, if you have any questions. So with that, we'll, we'll get started. So this represents the Water Fund, and what it shows you, it shows you the 2023 budget, it's all stacked up in one big column where the 2024 budget, you have the CFP to the right-hand side and the operating budget in the middle. But if you scroll down, it gives you the budget kind of in these larger chunks, that's kind of a weird-looking hash, oh, it looks better on there. So what I did is I looked at, looked at the numbers for 23 and 24, I gotta move that, there we go. Oh, I didn't just hang up on Councilmember Moulton.
No, that's okay.
So what I did is I looked at this, and I really tried to look at what, if there's differences, why are there differences? So to start with the capital budget, the CFP equipment and machinery increased from zero to $41,000, and that is for a new service vehicle. Just to, later on in the views, you'll see there that there are fleet, so whenever there's a new vehicle, it's not part of the fleet, you have to buy the vehicle first, and then you start paying into the fleet fund for that vehicle for replacement. So that's why there's- So that's why there's in the Water Fund, there's a there's a vehicle there. There's also another vehicle under the CFP, the other improvements that decreased from nineteen million to five point eight million. The main reason for that is the old water plant demo will be complete, but we also added a hydro excavator, which is a large truck that's better to dig up water pipe than it is to use a backhoe. Pipeline replacements and water hydraulic model and the water system plan update completion. We've already started it, but this will wrap it up in twenty twenty-four. The next item is the debt service. So the debt service went from two point nine million in twenty-three down to zero, and that you'll see this in a couple places, and this is a finance response to why that happened. The debt principal payments only hit the fund's balance sheet and end up skewing the budget and providing an unintended budget buffer for the fund. These capital payments are also directed by the debts authorizing ordinance, and similar to a capital project fund established by ordinance does not require specific budgeting. So we had it in there last year, and we basically took it out, because it it inflates the budget, doesn't it? It it happens outside of the budget authorization, just so you'll see that a couple of times in this in the different funds, so.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Sorry to interrupt, but it's very blurry on my screen, and I tried to adjust it using plus and minus to enlarge it or shrink it, and Councilmember Hubick seems to be having the same trouble. Are you, Mr. Young?
Yes, I was just trying to make the same adjustment. So I am too. Thank you.
Okay, I was just thinking people at home might be also, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I apologize. What we had kind of, well, we kind of figured out just today, starting to prep for this, the smaller the monitor you have, the worse the gray hatch gets on the on the picture. So that's why it looks decent on these TV screens, and on a larger computer screen, it doesn't look too bad. But some of these smaller screens, what we just realized is it's hard to see through that gray hatch because it condenses that picture.
Yeah, and I guess I guess the only advice I might offer to our remote council members would if if it's possible to pull it up on a computer screen going direct to the website as opposed to maybe getting the relay from from the City Hall monitors. That might help a little bit, but yeah, it's it's hashed over. But Mr. Rayum and Mr. Hoagland, just be clear on reading the numbers, so as so as you're as you're going through the line items, just, you know, see if you can read the numbers and highlight the differences, because I'm not sure how we'd be able to resolve it in in a short period of time.
Yeah, I think that's a software company thing. I haven't seen it do this before on my computer screens in my office, so.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
Aside from the hatch marks, which hopefully we can correct later, I take your point about deleting the debt service from the budget, because not everything has to be included in the budget. However, and and the point about it artificially inflates the budget, but if it's not included here, how is it accounted for? Because you have a certain amount of revenue projected. Is it going to make it look like we have extra revenue because the debt service isn't accounted for?
Right, no, it's good. It's a good question, and that's exactly how we anticipate the the principal debt service payment is through the cash flows. So all of that activity takes place on the balance sheet, so when we're, so it it's a direct it's a direct debit and credit to the balance sheet to, you know, to reduce the amount of cash and reduce the liability when those payments are made. But we the monitoring the budget is one part of our finance monitoring. The other part is monitoring that cash flow, you know, to ensure that we've got sufficient levels of cash coming in to meet those outflows required by the fund.
Yeah, I think that might not quite address my concern, which is we have a projection for how much revenue, and then we have our expenses. And if our expenses don't include one million dollars, which it it was last year, I assume it is this year, then aren't we missing a piece of data?
I see your point. You're not seeing everything that we're looking at when we're looking at the overall the overall picture. Yeah, that's a good it's a good point. I can.
Is there some other way to capture that, or?
Yeah, we have cash flow worksheets. I can I can bring in and share the cash flow worksheets that that we use on a month-to-month basis to, you know, to mean to to measure those, that we have sufficient levels of cash. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
And finally, then, is it is there a compelling reason to not include the debt service? Because it's an actual expense. Yes, it has maybe illegitimate inflationary effect on the budget, but lots of things do.
Yeah, so the 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 principal payment on the debt service is the one thing that that never actually hit our operating statement or the budget worksheet. So capital is another example. You can see nineteen million in in the twenty twenty-three capital budget. If you looked if you looked at the twenty twenty-two budget, it'd be a similar number. When you look at twenty twenty-two actuals of capital expenditures, it would be zero, because at the end of the year, we capitalize those capital expenditures and move them onto the balance sheet. With our debt service payments, we just skip that step altogether and just do all of that activity on the balance sheet. So it that was that was my thinking in removing that was that it you never did see in looking at the principal payment budgets, you never did see an actual next to that budget number. And in just monitoring the budget, it always looked like the the Water Fund had, you know, several million dollars in excess budget capacity because of that.
And we had discussed that point in the Council Finance Committee to try to make it look or to avoid appearance that we were banking millions and millions of dollars every year.
Right.
Because of that specific point.
But yeah, I I think we're happy to do whatever council wants. We're trying to develop a a budget that that not only made sense, but was an effective tool or a useful tool for us as well, for council members as well as staff. I'm happy to incorporate those cash flows into the the quarterly updates that we that we bring to council and and entertain additional, you know, comments or discussion about this.
All right, well, shall we press on?
We've got we've got a lot to cover. So salaries and benefits, those you'll you'll notice I just basically skip over those. Those are kind of automatic based on the labor contracts we have with the with staff. Overtime, we we sized it. You'll see in some cases it's a bit bigger, but it's based on actual overtime for this year. So that's probably the last time I'll talk about salaries and benefits unless you guys want to discuss them further. I'm gonna scroll down to services. So we're still in the Water Fund, just so you guys know. Professional services, we increased it from five hundred eighty-six thousand to nine hundred and twenty thousand. The increase is due to the lead copper monitoring that's required by the state, water main cleaning and plant cleaning to optimize water quality. Taxes and operating assessments is the next line. We increased it from six hundred forty-two thousand to two point two million, and this is due to a transition error with OpenGov. This line item consists of city tax, city utility tax, state PUT, Dyke District Assessment, excise tax, and the twenty twenty-three budget appears only to have been budgeted for state PUT. Moving on to supplies, office and operating supplies. Am I off the screen? Yep, there we go. Office and operating supplies, we increased it from six hundred thirty-four thousand to one point one million. Increases because we moved water system parts. System parts are very expensive. We moved them from the CFP into the operating budget. Supplies purchased for inventory or resale also increased from four hundred and one thousand to four hundred twenty-nine thousand, and the increase is based on actual price increases. The price of the parts actually went up is in addition to them being expensive in the first place. And that's one down, and now we've got five or six or so more to go. So we're gonna move to the sewer fund.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
On the question of salaries and benefits, certainly labor contracts could be the reason that the salaries line gets inflated. Other cost of living adjustments that aren't included in labor contracts as well. Also, the addition of additional staff could be a reason. And here, this is in excess of ten percent increase year to year. So we don't have visibility into any of that. How do we know that it's simply inflated due to what we have to pay employees next year versus adding additional staff?
So additional FTEs is another part of the budgeting process. You yeah, this by state law, this council has to authorize an FTE count, so if it goes up.
We do not.
What's that?
We have never authorized an FTE count. We adopt a one-page budget that does not include an FTE count. I mean, I think you're correct, but that's not been our practice.
Okay.
We, yeah.
That's what I'm used to, sorry, from my old job.
Yeah, the the eight years of my time on council, certainly annually, we we approve additional FTEs as a council. That's that's certainly an accurate statement, but yeah.
Yeah, I think by state law, the two things that the council has to do is approve the maximum amount that you the city can spend and how many FTEs it can employ.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, Ms. Moulton.
I don't recall that I do recall that we approve FTEs on, you know, periodically, but I don't remember ever approving or even knowing how many FTEs that we have.
Have totally. Yeah, okay.
Right?
Have in total, I guess, is what you're what you're asking.
Gray, or if we have a maximum that we're supposed to prove, I think we better look into that real quick if we're not in compliance, that we should be doing that.
Yeah. Mr. Hoagland, you want to help out with this this one?
Like many of us here, Mayor, I inherited the budget process when I stepped into it. So adopting a specific FTE count like this is not something that we've done in the past. Hasn't been part of our practice, and I have not run across that as part of like a statutory requirement for the budget process. Happy to look into that. And again, I think if it pleases council, we don't have a problem with making these types of changes. It's just a a change to the process that we've done in the past.
Yes, certainly my time on, even known as the FTE guy on council, I was comfortable as long as we knew how many additional FTEs were were being added, but certainly a big an overall picture of how many FTEs we currently have on staff is is more than reasonable.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Just to follow up, yeah, Mr. Hoagland, that if, I mean, I think it would be appropriate and desirable to find out if this really is a requirement of law.
Yeah, certainly.
We learn more all the time, don't we?
Yes, indeed. All right.
All right, we're on to the sewer fund. The sewer fund in twenty twenty-three was thirty-two point eight million, and this year we're proposing a twenty-one point two million dollar budget. The capital budget increased from four hundred fifty thousand, sorry, building and structures increased from four hundred fifty thousand to one point two million. The projects for twenty twenty-four include, in addition to the admin building at the sewer treatment plant, along with roof repairs and replacement of the original boiler system. Coverage and storage on the north pad will also be added, and the clarifier steel works will be sandblasted and recoded. Next one is the CFP equipment and machinery increased from five hundred twenty-five thousand to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in twenty twenty-four. Along with emergent repairs, potential to all pump stations, pump station upgrades are anticipated for pump stations three and four. Diffusers are due to be replaced in aeration basin number two with the treatment plant. Valve actuators and nutrient removal upgrades are proposed for both aeration basins, and the SCADA system will be upgraded with a virtual server to include dashboarding and other data utilization capabilities. Next one is the CFP. Other improvements was reduced from two point twenty-two point seven million in twenty twenty-three to nine million in twenty twenty-four with the outfall project authorized in twenty twenty-three budget and not in the twenty twenty-four CFP. Other larger projects in the twenty-four CFP include a one point five million dollar INI reduction effort, four point five million in CSO pump stations, I'm sorry, four point five million in the CSO pump station, two million in pump station sixteen replacement, and five hundred thousand in the general sewer plan. So debt service, the same deal as we discussed previously for water, for the debt service. Salaries and benefits. Again, just skipping right over those, and then getting to services, where we have professional services increased from three hundred and one thousand to three hundred and forty-one thousand. This is an increase that covers software licensing and support, engineering by HDR, controls for the integration by QCC, incinerator monitoring and source testing for E2 air, outside lab testing, and communication and controls of all the pump stations.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. So I understand that in the capital facilities plan, when we sort of hover over categories, we can read the story associated with the CFP. Some of the things, Mr. Rayum, that you're telling us, is there a way that we can find these somewhere on the budget page? Because I will forget some of these things that you're telling us today.
How to get to the stories for the capital, but the capital projects, correct?
Well, no, actually, I was just using that as an example that we can do that. We know we can do that, but here in general expenses in the budget, do we have a similar option where we could look and see, as you're explaining to us very well, where the why the prices are going up and what the money will be spent on or what the reductions are? Is there a way we can find this, or the public can find this somewhere in the finance page or this document online?
You can go, that's probably a good Philip.
Yeah, it's an open OpenGov question. It's possible. Unfortunately, it's not that easy.
Yeah, that's right. So each of the council members have a login credential for OpenGov. You can go into the budget module itself and look at the descriptions on each of the bars' numbers to identify if if there's been a comment inserted into that into that category. Some of the council may remember last year, our first year of using OpenGov, I tried to use the budget module here in this setting. It didn't go great, and that's why we went to this this version, because it it's a little higher level, but easier to look at and not as prone to induced dizziness as we're scrolling through the the material. But but that's available to the council members through the OpenGov module. Go in and look at the budget directly, scroll across to the far right column, and there's a description box.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Is that something that the public can access too? Do they need credentials to get into OpenGov, or could they just look at it?
We're consulting, if you can't see us, Ms. Moulton, we're consulting our OpenGov experts.
Yeah, so that that level of detail is not available to the public. That's in the budget module directly.
Okay, so I guess my question really is, if someone wants to go and look at what we're spending on our our money on exactly, they can't find it?
I guess I'm not I'm not following exactly. So if you're if you're asking if a council, if a citizen can see why a specific bars' number has increased or decreased in budget from the prior year, that information is likely not available. We have, we just don't have the means to provide that level of detail without going back to, like, what immediately comes to mind is an Excel download out of OpenGov. I don't remember if we've talked about that in this forum. It takes a tremendous amount of formatting to get those acts, those Excel downloads to work properly out of OpenGov, but that would be the that would be the venue for that information.
But I think it's possible to capture the story pages and and send those out. Again, I'm I'm far from an OpenGov expert, but we, you know, the the staff has provided a lot of detailed information on all of these expenses, and I think what ultimately Ms. Moulton's getting at is how to how do we how can we how can we communicate that info?
Yes, exactly, because we do, that information does exist. Obviously, Mr. Rayum is giving it to us right now, and that was kind of the hope when we went to a system like we looked at Socrata a couple of years ago, and where you could just hover over and be like, this is where the money is going. This is what we're spending on. I was dearly hoping for.
And and I think the challenge is because you've got to have a approved budget, because it's not it's not done yet, it's still, you know, being able to manipulate it can be challenging, you know, when it's. be challenging, you know, when it's not approved. So just throwing it out at the public, but maybe there's a way to do the draft budget.
Well, yeah, and may, maybe once we get, we get through this, perhaps, and we have, we have time before the budget needs to be adopted, I would be happy to bring up the budget module and go through each of those bars numbers. I was just trying to avoid what we ran into last year during the budget review.
Totally understandable.
So, so I guess my suggestion for council is, you know, as, as Mr. Ray or as each of the directors are highlighting their segments of the budget, you know, looking at the big differences, and then, you know, asking our staff how to, how to get the more detailed information, and, and then we'll, we'll, we'll work through the OpenGov challenges to provide that. Because they put a lot of effort into providing the details, certainly as we, as the staff put together the budget, there's, there's a lot of details in there, it's just a matter of getting it out.
Yes, thank you.
I'd welcome anybody in the public that wants to ask any questions about the Public Works budget to please contact me, and I can get you the answers anytime, so. And same with council, of course. Okay, keep on going on here. So the, I think the next one that I wanted to point out, so utilities, so training and travel, so for wastewater, that's a pretty big jump. We went from ninety, nine thousand five hundred to fifty-seven thousand, and that's because our operators at the wastewater treatment plant have to have operator certification. We're a bit behind, I would say, on the, the cost. The state used to have free training for wastewater treatment plant operators, they no longer do, so now you have to pay for it. So we want to make sure our staff are well-trained and able to operate the wastewater treatment plant, so that's the, that's the significant jump there. The other thing I wanted to point out, and this is, I skipped over this in water, and I skipped over it in all these budgets, but utility services, so that's just the amount of cost that the power, basically the power bill, and so they've, they've just gone up. All right, moving along to supplies. Go. We went from one point two million to one point three million, which isn't too huge. The, the supplies are really mostly for pumps for the wastewater treatment plant and for the pump stations, which could cost tens of thousands of dollars. The increase isn't for, like, office supplies and things like that. It's for consumables as well as pumps, that would include sand, sensors, mercury removal modules, and other chemicals that we use to treat the wastewater before we discharge it to the Gwamis Channel. That is it, or two down. Stormwater drain fund, those are the bigger ones, so should be a little easier now. The stormwater fund in 2023 is one point seven million total. We're requesting to increase that to two million. There are no capital improvements for 2024, there's no debt service.
Yeah, we're, I think, are we looking at the right thing?
Am I on the wrong-
Said two million. Storm drain fund.
There we go. Oh, there's two hundred and twenty thousand there. I didn't even bother to bring up, that's just if, if something comes up, we need to fix a pond or something like that. And services, so services, communications increased. One thing we noticed during this budget process is that the general fund is paying for utilities' cell phones. So we moved that appropriately to the utility funds that the cell phones are charged, or will be charged to in the future instead of the general fund. Professional services, we increased that, so we've proportioned, that was another thing we were doing, was the general fund was paying for ArcGIS and Cartograph, and we actually divvied that out across the utilities and the general fund instead of it being all general fund expense. And then the, the last piece is in the services. Where is it? Let's see it there.
And I don't want to mess up your notes, Mr. Ray, but maybe if you highlighted the ones you're talking about, it might help as you're moving down.
There's the professional services right there. Communication, communications right there, so went up a little bit there, cell phones, professional services was the other one that jumped up. That's going to be hard to do.
Yeah, no, I, I realize that.
It'll slow me down a little bit.
Maybe just the big ones.
And then supplies, supplies was the last one that seemed to jump out at me. It went up, and that was just the actual cost of operating supplies for the stormwater utility. And that was it for stormwater. Are we doing good? Ready to move on?
Ms. Moulton? Or, sorry, Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
No problem, thank you. So I was just, just because I'm not on the finance committee, for example, you know, we, last, two weeks ago, we approved the on-call engineers for fifty thousand dollars for wastewater, and then another fifty thousand dollars for streets and stormwater, right? And those were for six months, so I'm assuming we could expect to be a hundred thousand dollars for each of them. Where does, where do those two line items fit in to this budget?
So the professional services, so there, I did, I added twenty-five thousand, nope, not that line, into this line.
Only twenty-five, though?
Yeah, because, so it was fifty thousand for streets and storm, so this is just the storm portion of it, so it's twenty-five thousand.
But that's only for six months.
Uh, the current budget is, yeah.
Yeah, so should we, would-
My hope is that we're going to hire an engineer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're advertising.
Yeah, we're really advertising out there, yeah. And if not, we'll come back and do a budget amendment if we got to keep going with contracted engineering services. Any other questions? No, good, okay.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, assumedly, you also have salaries and wages for the employee city engineer though in the budget?
Yep.
And we don't require, because we adopted the fund level, we don't acquire, require council budget amendments for amendments within a fund.
Okay.
So you wouldn't actually have to come back for a budget amendment.
Perfect. All right, ready to move on to the sanitation fund? Solid waste is another term used for it. Scroll to the top there. Did you want me to add something? Okay. So sanitation fund went from four point nine million to six point eight million. The capital fund decreased.
So just, just that part, Mr. Ray, I'm like, when you, we can't see the total number that you just read?
Oh, I added it up, that's why you can't see it. I just tried to give you the high level.
Got it.
This is how much it moved, and then we go into the details of it.
Sounds great.
The capital outlay went from forty-five thousand to zero, and that was because we removed the dumpsters from the CFP, buying new dumpsters. And then machinery equipment decreased from forty-five thousand to zero. This change is due to also removing dumpsters from the capital, and, from the operating budget and putting them in the CFP. I'm sorry, we removed dumpsters from the CFP and put them in the operating budget. I said it backwards there. There's no, moving over salaries and benefits. Services-
Mr. Walters?
To clarify what you just said, did you move those dumpsters into ER and R?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we took them out of the CFP.
Good clarification.
Good, good, thanks.
All right, so for professional services, decreased from one hundred and forty-two thousand to one hundred and four thousand. Utility services increased. This is a pretty big increase, and we wanted to point it out to you. Where is-
Little bit lower.
There you go. There we go. So that's going up because Skagit County tipping fees, when we take our tall waste truck and we dump it there, they, they, the increase went up a lot. And so we don't know, we've heard how much it is, so that's what, that's what we put in the budget, but we don't have a for-sure number yet from Skagit County. All right, moving on to supplies. Office and operating supplies, that increased, because that is where the dumpsters are. There we go. So it went from eight thousand to eighty-one thousand, and that's because all the dumpsters are being purchased through the operating budget. And that is it for sanitation fund. Moving on to fleet. Go. So the fleet fund, this is not on the screen, but it went from three point one million to three point seven million. This is due to one point, so the capital outlay increased from one point three million to one point seven million. With that, we're replacing two garbage trucks, two garbage trucks, replacing two park operations trucks, replace one large park mower, replace three pump station generators, and replace one police admin car. So again, those are replacement vehicles, not new ones. A little bit, a new car, but it's a replacement of an existing car or vehicle. Now, there's no debt. The services. Go. Professional services has jumped up a bit, and that is due to the 2024 includes increase to help cover the cost of outside repairs and annual generator load testing. Repairs and maintenance decreased. This decrease is due to shifting some money to the professional services number previously spoken about. And then travel and training, this is somewhat of a theme for Public Works. This increases to hope to catch up with the training missed during, during COVID, and training new staff, or staff on the new hydroexcavation truck and the new ladder truck. And the last one is supplies, I wanted to point out, and small tools right there. That decreased because the hoist replacement was complete, and so we just brought it back down to the 2022 budget level. All right, street maintenance.
Mr. Walters?
None of the numbers on screen here in the ER and R view really provide us any insight or visibility into the overall health of the ER and R fund, at what level it's being funded, what are its liabilities, how many vehicles and other equipment is in it, that kind of thing. Is there some other form report that we can get that does describe the health of the ER and R fund?
That seems like a, Mr. Hoagland can help you out question?
Yeah, it's a good question. I meant to make a general comment about the fleet before, before I got into the details. This budget has, for the utilities, it has fleet funded at one hundred percent of the replacement costs. When we get into the general government next week, that'll be different, a different case, those are funded at fifty percent. But all of these are fully funded, the utilities, the fleet fund itself. I wonder if just a balance sheet review might, might be helpful. You could see then the levels of cash that we have on hand, both for operating and for future capital, and then it's easy to just compare that against the, the monthly and annual revenue and expenditure streams, you know, just to, to see what those levels are. So, yeah, I'd be happy to bring that back.
Yeah, let's explore that, and maybe we can do part of that at the next CFC meeting.
All right, we're moving on to street maintenance. Just so you guys know, know as well, the street construction, that's another whole separate, so we'll get there. But for street maintenance, we did include, oh, let's start at the top. So the overall, we went from four million to three point seven million. You'll note in here is under the one point eight million dollars, the capital expense is right there. Oh, here it was, okay. So just today, because I know this is important to the council, in 2023, the overlay budget was two point four million. As of today, the overlay program spent just two, two point, well, just a little over two point four million. Additional material costs and engineering inspection and consultation is not included in that, so it's a little bit even more. So we did meet the mark of trying to spend two point four million in 2023 on, on overlays. And we're planning on one point eight million next year. There's no debt service. I, I found that fascinating, I don't know, I keep repeating it, sorry, but there's, you guys don't have much debt, it's really good as a city. So for services, we have professional services went from two point four million to twenty-three to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, and that's because we moved the one point eight million, million into capital. The remaining hundred and thirty-four thousand is to pay for the ArcGIS, Cartograph licensing, tree removal, and snow and ice materials. And then travel and training again went from fifteen hundred, travel and training, there it is, fifteen hundred to seven thousand and twenty-four, same reason, we just are behind on training, we need to catch up. And the last one is for supplies. Office and operating supplies increased from a hundred and thirty-one thousand to a hundred and forty-six thousand in 2024. This is due to the increase in salt stock for snow and ice, as well as materials for increased sidewalk work. I'm going to skip facilities and just go to street construction, if everybody's okay with that, we'll come back to facilities at the end.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Maybe a little bit more on street maintenance?
Sure.
So the significance of the one point eight million dollar figure is that's the number that we put in our resolution when we went out to the voters and asked them to pass the two tenths of one percent sales tax increase in place of the car tab. We pledged that we were going to spend one point eight million dollars a year, and we've had some difficulty over the years making sure that we actually did that. Some of that is due to, you do a project and it's a little cheaper, and everybody applauds, but, you know, then you haven't spent one point eight million dollars a year. Some of it is due to, sometimes you have a big project and you save up for two years, and then you do the big project. I think we're all okay with that, ignoring the fact that one point eight million dollars last year is not the same as one point eight million dollars this year, and it won't be the same as one point eight million dollars next year. Really need to account for that over time, but our resolution doesn't take that into account. We are still pretty far behind, being on average, spending one point eight million dollars a year since we adopted that resolution and we got approval of the voters for the sales tax. So one point eight million next year doesn't catch us up at all. It only keeps us to the one point eight that we already pledged. I guess what I'm advocating is that we spend more, because we certainly have a backlog of maintenance and streets, even if we're spending one point eight million dollars a year. So that's number one. Number two, we did talk about, I think at our retreat and a couple of times in CFC, the idea of socking away one point eight million dollars every single year in a fund, even if we don't, you know, for the reasons I mentioned, don't expect to spend that much in any particular year, so that we can see for sure that we're putting that money away, and so that the money is there in fund balance when we need to go and spend that one point eight. So are we proposing to do that here in Fund 104, or are we not proposing to do that?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. It's an ongoing discussion point that, that we've had this year during this budget season. In fact, I was talking to one of our constituents on the phone earlier today about this very thing, and the potential of setting up a, a construction fund specifically for this overlay program, those resources identified in the, the originating resolution could just be then directed into that fund. There's a lot of gray that can come into the accounting in Fund 104, because there's so many other things that are taking place every year. It's a relatively, relatively large fund, even without the one point eight million dollars, it's still several million dollars a, a year of activity. So that is something that I would, that I'd like to continue talking about, and it, it makes the most sense if we're going to implement to do it, you know, the beginning of a, a year, you know, beginning of a fiscal year. So we don't have that accounting structure in place here. It wouldn't be terribly difficult to put it in place, but we don't have that here yet.
So, so I would like to accomplish it, and like you say, it makes sense at the beginning of the year. I think it should be accomplished via code amendment, laying out the fund and the allowed uses for it. And I agree with you, shouldn't be 104, because there's so many other uses of that fund.
A good segue into street construction. As you can see, this is mostly a capital facilities plan budget. I just wanted to reiterate, so we went from six point five million twenty-three to six point four million, and this amount of money includes sixteen street improvements, transportation element of the comp plan update, ADA ramps, local road safety plan, March Point trestle, non-motorized improvements, Q Avenue pedestrian improvements, R Avenue safety and mobility improvements, sidewalk and trip hazard repairs, South Commercial Corridor Phase One from Eleventh to Thirteenth, and Capital Street paving program of, oh, wait, sorry. Capital paving programs in the other one, so. That is your list of other capital projects into the street construction fund. And the last piece is facilities. Thanks for hanging in there with me, we're almost done. Up here. For facilities, let's see here, we're proposing to go from seven hundred thousand in 2023 to five hundred thousand. Capital, oh, capital's not there, that's nice. So capital was there, but so we increased from three hundred and fifty thousand in- Uh, so capital was there, but so we increased from 350,000 in capital to 615,000 in '24. It includes a facilities comprehensive plan, which will help us better plan out what, how to tackle the needs of all the different facilities throughout the city. It distributed $50,000 for each facility instead of a one-line item for emergent repairs. I understand that was a council request from the last budget, but we talked about that, um, a couple of weeks ago at the Capital Facilities Plan meeting. So I'd like to hear your feedback on, on whether we do that or not in this budget. One other line item I just wanted to point out, for City Hall in 2024, the budget is 50,000, and, uh, it's obviously included in the 100,000 dollars for the facilities comp plan. Uh, City Hall investment over the six-year CFP is 4.4 million, but that includes the outdated seismic retrofit, cost of 3.5 million. But I figured you guys would like to know how much we're looking at investing into the, uh, City Hall. Uh, for services, we have, professional services have decreased from 77,000 to 40,000. Uh, the 2023 budget was amended to pay for a service pro to clean up after a water leak. That is why it's back to 40,000 in 2024 instead of being the 77,000. And then repairs and maintenance. Line item, uh, was reduced from three, 300,000 to 50,000. And that reduction of 250,000 is to spread out the 50,000 in the CFP to each of the facilities. I think, oh, a little bit more. Travel and training, same deal, it's, it doubled from 2,500 to 5,400 dollars. Uh, same deal with not having. There it is. Uh, uh, just not having the access to training for quite a few years. And then supplies went up a little bit from 13,000 to 17,000. This increase was for outfitting, uh, the new position and outfitting the new truck with appropriate tools to fix facilities. And that is the end of the operating budget discussion for Public Works.
Okay, before I, uh, give it over to council, I'll, I'll just ask if any member of the public wants to dive in and, and, uh, comment. Okay, come on up.
Good evening. Dennis Clark, 3805 M Avenue. As has been referenced already tonight, council back in 2018 committed to investing 1.8 million dollars per year in this critical public infrastructure, namely the street pavement overlays. And the, uh, resolution that the council adopted actually had a very specific goal of making this investment for the purpose of achieving a pavement condition index of 85, um, on our, uh, minor arterials and 70 on our residential streets. And back in 2018, when you did this, uh, there wasn't any discussion of inflation when you adopted the resolution, and probably because inflation at that time was 1.9%. Well, since then, we have seen that inflation can have a big impact on our purchasing power. And in fact, from 2018 to today, um, our dollar has declined by 23% in value. So 2018's 1.8 million dollars today, 1.8 million dollars is equivalent of less than 1.5 million dollars in 2018 dollars. If we were, uh, if we had adjusted our investments, um, to keep up with inflation, our, uh, investment in 2024 accounting for this year's inflation would be over 2.4 million. And, um, we aren't there. The current CFP proposes to keep it at 1.8 million dollars. These investments have paid off, we can see progress throughout the city, and that's thanks to the commitment by this council, by the mayor, and by the staff. So my question and urging to you is, uh, to add to Councilmember Walters', which is to think very seriously about increasing the budgeted amount for Fund 104 for pavement overlays to the order of 2.4 million in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, yeah, appreciate, the dollar amount's very important, but I appreciate highlighting what I was thinking about the dollar amount as the PCI, the PCI piece. That's, uh, you know, that's how we, that's how we measure our success or lack of success when it comes to overlay. And I know we have that coming up soon. We've, we've made some pretty decent progress even with the, uh, the lesser amount, so. Getting out of the arterials, we've been able to get some neighborhood roads that were really bad, but anyway. Any other, anybody else wanna comment on this, uh, section of the budget? Okay, yeah, still a lot more, a lot more work to do on the budget, council. Uh, I think we've hopefully taken some notes on the questions, concerns. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ahm.
Thank you.
We will move on to, where are we? Probably in number seven, and we are on, uh, 7D, Ordinance 4062. Ordinance adopting new AMC Chapter 2.08 regarding appoint of officers of the city. This is a discussion item with some possible action. And I know, Mr. Wal, uh, I know it was proposed by Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and Ms., uh, Moulton. So I don't know which one of you wanna present. I know Mr. Walters sent Sunday night some changes, um, maybe based on some feedback. So, uh, the staff is aware to provide some feedback as well, but Mr. Walters, do you wanna present your feedback on the, or some potential changes to the ordinance, or?
My understanding is that, uh, staff's prepared a presentation, is that not correct?
That is correct. Okay, okay. And in order to be recognized, please, uh, uh, ask for permission. Ms. Swetnam, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and council members, members of the audience. So this is, uh, Ordinance 4062. This, this was presented by council members, and, um, this was reviewed by department heads and by staff. And so, uh, multiple staff members had some, some comments or some suggestions. And so I've kind of consolidated all of those. I think there was a, there was a, a version in the packet that had all of those comments listed. And so, uh, we're just kind of providing these to make sure that, that council has staff's perspective and any feedback um, that, that's helpful in working to a resolution on this ordinance. So staff review, uh, so all department heads, uh, had an opportunity to, to review the proposed ordinance, and those comments were consolidated and placed in the packet for tonight. Uh, Councilmember Walters, uh, provided an updated draft over the weekend that addressed many of those staff comments. And so in these slides, I've highlighted those points that some modifications were recommended in red, just so you all can see kind of how the, how the, the discussion has evolved. Uh, and by the way, I, I think there are other department heads too here who have weighed in, and if there are specific questions, I think, I think multiple folks are happy to jump in and answer. Um, so we kind of tackled this by section of the ordinance. Um, and starting with the appointed officers list. So in the proposed original ordinance, it was recommended that this position of city engineer be an appointed officer, and this, uh, recommendation from staff was to remove that position from the list, because it is not a department head position. Uh, it could be a union position, and there are specific statutory obligations. Noted that the city engineer is a for cause employee, while all of the other department heads are at-will employees. So that's a, a policy consideration for council. Uh, the next one is the hearing examiner. So that was recommended to be removed from the list as well, um, mainly because the hearing examiner appointment is already addressed in Chapter 230 of the code and has some language for the mayor to appoint pro temp hearing examiners. And I noted here that Councilmember Walters did propose deleting that, uh, position from that list in that first section. Uh, so the next one is the Human Resources and Labor Relations Director. Uh, there was a recommendation to remove that position from the list, uh, because the mayor has moved the HR and labor relations duties under the Administrative Services Department. Uh, so, so it's not currently a standalone position.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
So as one of the personnel committee members of three, it's Moulton, um, Young and I, uh, we haven't had a meeting about that, so I find that troubling, uh, that the HR department has essentially dissolved and been put under a different, um, department head. Um, I would like to have further discussion with that. And, uh, fine if it should be in the general public, but I have, that's very concerning to me.
Well, uh, simply was the correct decision considering I had, uh, a director who in, and I don't wanna embarrass her, because it's a good thing, that's been in a, in a city employee for over 20 years, and of that 20 years, only 17 months, this particular director was not the HR director. So it seemed like a pretty easy management move.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland.
I think that the HR department needs to be independent of all other departments in the city for liability purposes, um, so that things can be investigated. And the fact that, yes, that person is a very wonderful department head. She has 22 employees under her, uh, and various other departments that, uh, answer to her. So I have real concern with how independent that department is.
And I was, I was just curious on that, were any independent collaboration on that type of management decision being the best, you know, Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I think it should have come to our, our Personnel Committee, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I think it should have been brought to our attention prior to it coming, uh, being posted as no longer having a HR director, that now there's an HR manager being posted. No one in the HR department was informed until that was told to be posted. Um, I have a problem with the fact that you, that, uh, when you go to look at, uh, the directory salary, it's already been changed, there's no longer an HR director listed among the D1 through 7. I believe it used to be a, I don't know what, I don't have it, but now there's an HR manager listed at D18. Um, we have a lot of, there has been, uh, things coming up, and the HR department needs to continue to be independent as things are investigated, and I'm concerned.
Well, I do not have any concerns at this point, that we have the right person to be able to cover the department. Again, I guess it goes back to what I mentioned when I first was surprised with these concerns two weeks ago. What problem are we trying to solve? And the reasoning I got from council was, one, our city engineer, who had been city engineer of all of 10 months, uh, left for more pay, a shorter commute, and lesser responsibilities, and an HR director who resigned while on, uh, on leave, uh, who had been in the job for eight months. So I'm still trying to figure out what exactly we're trying to solve. I'm trying to, to run the city, and I have the right people in place to do that. Ms. Cleland, or Ms. Moulton.
Oh, thank you. So I think it's, I think it's great we're jumping right in here to address, um, all of our concerns. And I am concerned, very concerned about not having an independent HR director and department. If the HR department is under another, okay, so say, say we combined Parks and HR, just for an example. If you work for the Parks Department and you have any kind of an, an issue with your boss, and your boss is also the HR manager, you really have nowhere to go. It really needs to be a distinct, separate department in order to protect our employees, also abide by the law, follow employment law to protect the employees, and also protect the city. And at this time, when we are going to hire five police officers and eight firefighter paramedics, that is a huge job, and it needs to be an independent department in order to be able to do that.
Okay, so the argument is an independent department.
With an actual director, not eliminating a director position. I think this is one of the things that this ordinance is trying to, to get to, is the kind of creation or deletion of, of directors. I mean, where does this, I, I think that we want to codify the fact that we don't think it's a good idea for APD and AFD to be managed by one person. That if we want to do that, it needs a robust public process with public and council improvement. If a mayor, any mayor can just sort of merge departments at will, I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's good process. I think that we need a more robust public and council-related process, because this is policy. And we're trying to clarify that policy, so we have these guidelines that we abide by going forward.
Mr. Walters.
I, I do think that the, the list, and Ms. Swetnam is starting to go through the list. The list goes to the structure of city government. City engineers in the list, because the city engineer is referenced as having specific duties or authorities 50 or more times in the code. And some of these other issues can be worked around, or we can talk up, about them a little bit more. HR and labor relations director is in the list, because we think we should have an HR and labor relations director. Similarly, the planning and community economic development director, and I'm sure, Mr. Coleman, you'd love to not be involved in this at all, but, uh, that position has specific authority. We have, through the code, given that position. And we've given that, that position knowing that that's a department head, that will be confirmed, but it isn't laid out in the code. And so that's one of the reasons that we need to have the list of, uh, department heads in there. Because if we were, if, if we didn't have confidence in our planning director, we might not write the code to give a whole bunch of responsibility to the planning director. And so, and that applies to several of these positions, police chief, fire chief, uh, and so it's, that's why it's important to call that out. We do have a role as the policymaking body to set up the structure of city government.
Mayor Miller. Hold on, but before we get off on the, we have a role to, to make sure that the, uh, you know, for example, the planning director's performing, uh, that's my role to be, have the authority to terminate that person. Mayor Miller. Mr. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, I, I didn't say, um, that we have a role to determine whether the planning director is performing, and again, apologize for even mentioning the planning director. But, um, no, that's not our role. Our role is to decide who we give authority to in the code. And I think that one of the reasons we did that is, and it's very common that we do that, is because we know that that's a department head, and that position is confirmed. Even though there isn't a list, if we are talking about being able to just eliminate departments without consulting city council, which apparently we are, because that's what's now happened with HR, then we are in a different climate.
All right, sorry, I heard performance in there. Uh, Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to actually add my, myself to the list of concerns about the, the movement of the HR director under a different department. I work for a Fortune 500 company, and our HR department reports directly to the CEO. And, and really, that is kind of best practice within the corporate world today. And the fact that, you know, the trend has been to elevate HR to report to the CEO, not to sort of, I guess, diminish HR to put it under some other department. So, uh, we'd be going against basically best practice.
I guess I, I wish that concern came up a year ago, when, uh, the same person was doing the exact same role, uh, a year and a half ago, or one, one year, two years ago.
But I think that that, excuse me.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I mean, if we wanna rewrite the history of, of a couple of years ago, it was COVID. We had a manager, that manager learned the skills that were necessary. She became director, she left after six months. We went through a number. We went through a number of interviews. It was an incredibly challenging hiring environment at that point in time, which was, what, 2019, September, so, or, no, I'm sorry, sorry, 2021, I apologize. It was from when the HR director left in August of 2020. It was incredibly difficult environment to hire another HR director. The intent through that entire time, because I was on that Personnel Committee, was we went through a number of applications, we went through a number of interviews, we wanted an HR director that was independent, that had its own department. Unfortunately, we were not able to find that, but we found another candidate who needed to learn one section of skillset, so she was made a manager, the labor relations component. Fortunately, we had someone in-house who was able to consult with that, but we also have outside consultants for labor relations that we regularly depend on. So I, let's be really clear that, at least from my perspective in the last four years on Personnel and Council, our goal has always been to have an HR department independent with a director.
Okay. I was also on the Personnel Committee for four years, and I don't recall that discussion, but noted. Do you want to continue on? Obviously, we know that this is a issue of contention that we'll keep working through. Ms. Swetnam.
Sure. So the next name on the list that staff had some recommendations on was municipal judge, and there was a recommendation that that position be removed, because the city's municipal court is provided through Skagit County District Court, which was established through a petition process back in the 1960s, and it's something like a one-to-four-year process for us to get out of it. So it seemed like those are positions that are rotating, judges that are part of Skagit County District Court. So Councilmember Walters, in the updated draft, proposed clarifying language that this, as an appointed position, would only apply if we no longer have judges rotating through Skagit County District Court.
Mr. Walters.
And that's more or less the language that was in the original draft, but a couple of tweaks, and so I'm interested in your opinion as to whether or not those tweaks satisfy your concerns. I'd note City of Burlington has similar language, more explicitly calling out the rotation of district court judges. But overall, the point is that municipal judge is very definitely a position that either should be elected through district court and their court commissioners, or be confirmed.
Well, I would say that the, that the language that was provided in the updated ordinance addressed my original concern, that if there were changes to the court system, because I think the original language was about changing the relationship with Skagit County, which has happened through the addition of community court, and so my recommendation was that it be more clear what that relationship is. I think the adjustment addresses that point. I think there are maybe other department heads who also thought that that position should be taken out altogether, but I think the proposed language that you added is, addresses the current structure. Okay, moving on. Restrictions on appointments. So there's, there was language that clarified that an individual couldn't serve in more than one appointed position. There was some concern about that, and an example was brought up that, you know, if there was a kind of an unexpected vacancy, that there might be a situation where a department head might want to provide coverage for another department in a leadership role. An example that was brought up came out of discussions from the Public Safety Section, where, you know, it's possible, and previous mayors have contemplated for short-term periods of time, having a department head oversee both fire and police to address public safety issues. The other additional example is there are cities who have their city engineer also as their public works director. Sometimes it can be challenging to find a city engineer, and so if the public works director is a licensed engineer, that's happened. So those are just some examples that were brought up that might make sense. The other restriction was on city administrator, so there was a recommendation that the, the language that said that a new city administrator position can't be appointed without action from council be removed. And that, the rationale behind that recommendation was that if there was a disagreement between the mayor and council, that could limit the mayor's ability to conduct city business by putting somebody in that role.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Let's take these two points, maybe. So from the bottom, the city administrator, if a mayor wanted to create the position of city administrator, would that not require any council review or action?
Yeah, I think it probably would.
The multiple appointed officers, I think that those are not invalid points that you raised from staff. However, we have had situations in the past, city attorney and planning director simultaneously, that I don't think anybody wants to return to. The suggestion that we have one person in charge of police and fire is, does not strike me as a good one. But if it did make sense, wouldn't it make sense to have that discussion at city council, and have city council weigh in on it? It's a rhetorical question.
Okay. Moving on. Interim appointments. So there were several comments from various department heads recommending deletion of this section. One concern was that there could be impacts to collective bargaining agreements if there are limitations on adjusting staff positions. Another concern was the restriction on appointing someone who's previously filled that position. That could limit the city's ability to get qualified help with an unexpected vacancy. And Councilmember Walters, in the updated draft, did propose deleting that language. I think the overall concern was maybe that three months is too short a time to conduct, to ensure that a recruitment process can happen, and, you know, especially for positions that may give longer notice times than, you know, than two weeks. There are other agencies that have limitations on interim appointments that are longer, six months, a year. So that was, that was a main concern, that that might be too limiting, especially with, you know, recent uncertainties in the job market, so.
Hold just one second. While it was pointed out to me that I don't have a vote on this, and I understand that as well, I do think there's some room for some compromise, at least from the executive branch, as far as a recommendation that I think six months could be a reasonable, a more reasonable timeframe to go in there. Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. You know, I heard the comment, or I read the comments about the six-month proposal, and I actually thought that was probably a fairly reasonable period of time. But I also know that I have served for four years on the Personnel Committee, some with Young and McDougal, and then later on with Young and Molten. And so I went back with my correspondence and looked through the vacancies from January of 2020 through present day. I provided it to Mr. Franciac to add to the notes for this meeting. But as we go through the public works director positions, we've had two transitions, or vacancies. The first one was three months and three days, and there's a note because that director, public works director, had an existing planned vacation that was extensive, so he was confirmed on May 9th and started on July 18th. But even with that, was three months and three days. After he had left, we had an interim director. He announced he was leaving June 5th, he left July 14th. One month and 28 days, so two months later, we had a public works director, our current one, reporting, he'd started on August 28th, or he was confirmed on the 28th and started on the 11th. Planning, we had a person retire, we had an interim director, which was Mrs. Grange, who's seat manager, took two months to fill it. Police, again, we were able, it was shorter, because we actually went through the application process, interviewed a number of people, we determined that one of the captains was the qualified choice to become police chief, that was one month and three days. Fire EMS, we had one person leave unexpectedly, or quickly. We had an interim for three months, we had specifically hired a gentleman with 40 years of fire experience, because we had some challenges in that department, and we needed really strong leadership. So he came, spent three months as we transitioned our current fire chief in. That was five months and five days. And part of that is because of the extensive psychological and medical examination, takes a little bit longer between the offer date and confirmation date. Finally, go to the library, it was two months, that was during COVID, we took one of our managers, he ended up becoming the director. Now, we get to HR, that's been a really complicated situation, and I think we've kind of touched on it a bit in our interaction today, but, or earlier to this meeting, but I, I look at these days, and I've provided it to council and the mayor and staff, I, I consider the three-month mark to be a mark that seems reasonable in the last four years to fill a position. My intent when I read this is that if it's going to take longer than three months, let us know. Give us an update about what's happening. Is it a challenging job market? Is it, what's going on? Because what I don't want to see, what I have concern for, is that somehow positions are disappearing, directors are disappearing, things are being reorganized without council committee's purview and the public's understanding of what's happening. So to me, that's just a great check-in, nothing more than that.
All right. Well, very glad we're now looking at history, so that's awesome.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
As the mayor suggested, six-month timeline for interim appointments, I think would probably be okay with me. I think it's definitely a point well-taken, that three months, which is in the draft, is very consistent with what we've been able to achieve before. So three months is not unreasonable, despite protestations to the contrary. However, six months is a more common number in other cities' ordinances, that also limit the length of interim appointments. So if we wanted to be consistent with other cities, maybe six months is something that we ought to consider.
Yeah. Again, we currently don't have anything like this, because there was some comments made by council that we're just, we're just codifying the status quo. So again, I think we should take a good amount of time to look at all these points. Ms. Swetnam, I think you have some more.
Yes. So council notification and review of appointments. The first subsection there would have the mayor notifying council immediately if there were interim appointments, vacancies, changes with these appointed offices. And there was a recommendation to change that language from immediately to providing that notice in a timely manner. There was an example that was brought up about if, you know, there was an employee who was having a medical issue, or something like that, that it might be appropriate to allow the mayor to notify family members, or, you know, directly impacted coworkers before that was brought to council. The two-week minimum notice for confirmation, so initially, there was a recommendation to remove that, based on feedback from some recently-appointed department head, that could deter applicants who kind of feel like their position isn't solidified until they've been appointed by council, and that could create some challenges with respect to providing notice to existing employers who might not be aware of the fact that that candidate was searching for a new position. So there was some concern about that, and in the updated draft, Councilmember Walters proposed reducing that from two weeks to 10 days.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
And that 10-day number is also consistent with what quite a few other jurisdictions use. Although, it might effectively be two weeks, because we meet once a week.
The last point was on council ability to review materials and meet candidates informally. So the recommendation from staff was to replace that language with proposed language that would allow up to two council members to participate in the selection process. I think what currently happens is that when there's a department level, department head level vacancy, a council member from the Personnel Committee sits on that interview panel, and then if that position is also related to a different council subcommittee, a member of that committee would also participate. And so the recommendation was maybe that was the appropriate way for council to be able to vet these individuals. I had a little bit of concern about informal meetings with council members, depending on how that was done, could create some OPMA issues, since evaluating candidates would likely be city business. And somebody also brought up the point that AMC Section 214020 already anticipates, talks about council approval of department heads. So there is some concern that this might deter candidates.
And I think since we're honored to have so many members of the public here, just to clarify for the public, the current process, or at least the process of the three directors that I've hired since being here, is we always had two members of council typically, one from the Personnel Committee, and then one from the related committee, for example, Planning Committee for the future planning director, and that's been common practice that has not been written down before, but seemed to be common practice from the previous mayor as well.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molten.
Yes, and I've been part of that process, and I've really appreciated it. I think it's very appropriate, and I would like to have that somehow in this, in this ordinance. I don't know about the informal meetings myself either, but I do think it's appropriate for all council members to be able to review materials, such as resume, the things that are provided by the applicant, instead of just kind of showing up at a meeting and having to vote for someone. I do think that council, I think it's best for everyone if we are given the opportunity to review those materials. Whether or not we meet informally with them, I'm not so sure that I feel that need, but to be able to review the materials, the resume, I think would be positive.
So I guess that goes to the number of days prior to council confirmation, because ultimately all these director positions require council confirmation. I certainly have, I guess I'm getting the feedback now, but I certainly don't recall, with the exception of, yes, due to the timing of one interim director, or one director, sorry, that I hired, it happened out of sequence due to scheduling issues, but I don't recall ever not providing the resume and all of the issues prior to, prior to council confirmation, at least in a decent amount of time. So again, we'll plan on continuing to do that, whether it's in code or not.
So I think, I think this is the last slide I have. So employment and contracts. So the original ordinance, there was a recommendation from me, actually, to kind of clarify the language, to identify which contracts have to be presented to council for review, I just wanted to make sure that we were being clear with Chapter 130 of the code, that governs contracts and contracting authority. So I think Mr. Walters addressed that in the updated draft, clarifying that only employment contracts go to council, not personal services contracts, unless they would otherwise need to go to council under the contracts ordinance. And I just want to bring up the point that employment contracts have not gone to council traditionally in the past, there's a, for department heads, there is a kind of a template agreement that modifies department heads' employment position from being for cause to at-will at the, you know, mayor's discretion, that is, you know, been signed by department heads. And so that's, that's what's traditionally been done. And that kind of relates to the mayor's authority to terminate employees, which is kind of the point of those agreements. And then the last.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Before you move on to the last bullet, on the point about employment contracts, AMC 130 also requires employment contracts. AMC 130 also requires employment contracts and all contracts of the city with only one exception for fiber contracts to be recorded in the contracts database and made available to the public. The statute, the state law, vests the contracting authority of the city in the city council, and no one else has any contracting authority except as delegated by the city council, and that's reflected in AMC 130. So, I mean, this is not a problem that is unique to Mayor Miller. This has been the practice for a long time, but it hasn't been correct. And so it does need to be corrected, and that's why I think it's worth addressing it in the code.
The final point was that compensation would be set by the annual budget. There was a recommendation to remove that just because that has the potential to limit mid-year adjustments, changes in scope of work, reclassification changes, and potentially interferes with procedures in the personnel policy. And the example that came up about this is that the collective bargaining agreements happen out of cycle with the budget and often involve reclassifications, and so that was kind of the feedback on that point. And I think those are all of the comments from staff on the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer questions if I can. I know that there are other department heads here as well.
I didn't add it up, but I, and maybe I should, but probably 350 employment actions that I approve every year at a minimum, whether it's, you know, whether it's a probationary period ending, for example, or interim assignment of a manager or supervisor to get increased pay, because that kind of goes to that point, because some of the contracts, you know, require or have negotiated successfully increased pay for supervisory positions and things like that, or interim director pay. So just, I think, I'll come up with those numbers, just it's a daily multiple employment actions that are just required by me or any mayor running a city this size. Okay, so that was the staff's presentation. I guess this is open for public comment, and some of you have waited very long to weigh in, I think. So I'll go ahead, oh, so somebody, you get first dibs if you write your name down to sign in, because it makes it a lot easier to manage speakers. So come on up and state your name for the record, please, and where you live, and we just ask for the city. You don't need to give your address.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Thank you, council members. Marquette Deverell, 1520 K Avenue. So there's obviously some new information coming out tonight, so I don't have full visibility into the particulars, and my comments are going to be somewhat general and address generally the democratic process rather than any of the language of the ordinance. What I know about this issue is what was written in the Anacortes American, and that is the extent of what I've known. But I'll say that listening to the last 30 minutes of discussion, it appears that this process needs a lot more transparency, and as a citizen, I feel very uncomfortable with the executive deleting a department head without the council's knowledge. So based on what I read in the article, my thoughts are as follows. Indefinite interim appointments chip away at our democracy. They allow the executive to fill key governmental positions with his or her select loyalists without the process of legislative approval. Adopting the proposed ordinance would address the current and existing vagueness in the language of the ordinance, create the accountability that we need and the transparency in the process of appointments, and better protect the democratic process, because it would allow both the executive and the legislative branch of the government to weigh in, which in effect represents a larger portion of the city's constituents. I believe that the ordinance can be written in a way that is neutral to both parties, and that protects both parties on either side of the spectrum going forward. I will say, and I'm sure many of you will agree, that democracy is messy. It is governing by committee. It reminds me of a very weird animal, and that is a camel, which, as you know, is a horse designed by committee. But democracy is the only thing we have. It's not the easiest way to get from point A to point B. It is a painful and painstaking process, and it has to take into account and listen to and abide its citizens. And that is why dictators don't favor it. Again, it is our only option, and we should be careful not to curtail the process for the sake of expediency. We should not depart from our messy, frustrating, and sometimes inefficient form of democratic system of government to its very alternative, a very efficient dictatorship. We should not take the first incremental step on that slippery slope. It seems to me like there's a bit more work to go on this ordinance, and the devil's always in the details. Democracy is a fine balance of power, and I would encourage this body not to vest a disproportionate power in the executive, whether you decide to have appointments approved by the council for three months or six months. It's very important that there is some limit to the power that we give to the executive for who they want to appoint. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else would like to weigh in on this? Oh, okay, come on up.
I live in Anacortes. I had a couple of questions. I'm not clear on all of the history of this, but one of the questions I had dealt with the city administrator. One of the things that was discussed tonight was the fact that there was concern the mayor might want to bring in a city administrator, perhaps without the approval of the city council. And one of my questions is, can the city council bring in a city administrator which would then take over responsibilities from the mayor? How does that work? Is that possible under our current system?
I think I might be able to answer the question, only because I know that I'm separately elected by the people, so that then over the years in Anacortes, they've had the discussion of a city manager type position, which is a different form of government, so that's going to require a lot more hoops there.
Okay. So that is a different type of government because other municipalities in our county do have...
Yeah, many, many cities are organized where it's a weak mayor, where the mayor is elected by the council. Obviously, I'm, again, to use the term, you know, strong mayor, it's not, you know, because I'm trying to run roughshod over anybody, it's just that's what the form of government is called, because I'm separately elected by the electorate, not by the council. But in order to change that form of government, I couldn't tell you exactly the hoops to jump through, but it would require council action, probably a vote of the people, all that, all that good stuff.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And then the other, the comment that I wanted to make is, I don't consider myself a dictator. I consider myself a realist, and I think that ruling everything by committee is just not feasible, effective, or efficient. So although I appreciate that some of these items maybe need to be made more specific or clear perhaps, it seems that the mayor, who is elected by the entire city, should have some autonomy and authority. Now, the definition of that seems to have been working up until perhaps a couple of weeks ago. I don't know what happened to create that issue. It seems the mayor seemed a bit blindsided by this whole event, and then perhaps Councilwoman Cleland McGrath also seemed blindsided today, so there's a lot of perhaps communication that's not occurring. I don't know. But I do know that somebody has to be in charge to run the day-to-day operations, and the seven people on the council are not in the city to do that. And although perhaps there needs to be more discussion, a public format may not be the best to do that. Perhaps everyone needs to get together and work together to create a solution to the problem. But for now, the mayor is the elected official in charge of the day-to-day operations, is my understanding, and I continue to support that until another solution is achieved with public comment. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I thought I would just clarify the answer to the question of city administrator. There is a separate form of government called the council manager form. Anacortes used to operate under that form, but many years ago decided to change to what is known as the mayor council form, and that's the form we operate under today. In the council manager form, there isn't a city administrator, but there's a city manager. But I think that's immaterial to the question that was asked. In our form of government, one can have a city administrator. Council can create as many positions as it wants, but the mayor's not obligated to fill them, and a city administrator is not necessarily any different from any other employee. It's just a title that's given out. It's not created by state law, but it is somewhat common. So for instance, Burlington has a city administrator. Seidra Woolley, I think, calls their position city supervisor, but it's similar. And again, it's not a position that is titled by state law, so you can call it whatever you want. And Mount Vernon also has a position that is not quite that, but is, can be similar.
All right. Luckily, I was paying attention to the screen. I see there is an online attendee with their hand up. So if you would state your name, we'll unmute you. Oh, Rochelle Kalala. Sorry, I always mess that up, but that's why you get to state your name for the correct record, and what city you live in.
Can y'all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Please continue.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to say that, like, I fully support city council on this, and I'm super stoked on y'all working on this. I was just curious, Mayor Miller, how you feel about shenanigans and how you feel about people noticing you losing it like a toddler when you don't get your way. Anyways, I just wanted to say shenanigans like a bunch more times, and go city council. That's it.
Thanks for that. All right. Any other, oh, yeah, come on up, please.
I don't want to get into all the details. I really strongly second the comments made by Dennis Law. I think he had some very thoughtful views on what was going on here, and I think some of the discussions have been productive. Frankly, I think the two issues are happening here. You've gotten into a gray area in the separation of powers, and those always lead to conflict. And I think that it's compounded by the fact that, as my wife pointed out, there are a lot of informal and not very well documented processes that have been happening, and it's time to clean up this mess. It's happened numerous times in various policy areas that the councils had to play catch-up and bring things up into the current times. That being said, I think I'm most disappointed that it's taken this format to do that instead of some good behind-the-scenes discussion to understand what the problems are, where the conflicts are, and where the policies need to be changed, and then come with some productive discussions in front of the community. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Well, yeah, I've heard a lot of good discussion, certainly, you know, when it comes to management and management and leadership, I think I've said it before, I've been doing that kind of stuff for almost 30 years. But I also will tell you, having served in the Navy, flying jets off aircraft carriers, I also have a pretty thick skin. So if there's concerns from council with my management and leadership style, I'm happy to, if you want to do it in public, that's fine, but, you know, my door has always been open for that, and until a couple of weeks ago is the first time I've, you know, kind of got that feedback. So again, and it's also important to think about, it's not about me or any of you, it's about what's best for the city in the long run. So I think there's probably some value here to work on this, to clean it up, but it's certainly not codifying the status quo. It's working on making the city better, so.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. You know, I've remained quiet for a bit just to absorb it all and to really drink in the details of explanations as to why and the reasoning behind it. And I think that where we are at now, not only as a city, given the recent activity at the port, the always need for greater communications between not only the legislative side but the administrative side, and I think that we've been working on that. And I agree that there are things that we need to really clean up. I am also of the opinion, though, that the HR or department needs to be independent, meaning independent as an independent department head, because the purposes of that, when we were originally considering making it an independent person in that role, was because of all the other things the, one of our other staffers had taken on, including in that is the fiber, including that is so many other negotiations, it was just not possible. But there's a real rational reason as to why I am personally, and I believe that council had the discussion about having an independent personnel or HR director. It would allow that person to be able to deal with all issues and independently not have to, would independently have the authority to make decisions when it comes to HR, because sometimes that comes in various departments or people wanting to do something that may not be consistent. So I think that when we had that discussion earlier about having an independent HR director, and the reason why we moved that to a director's level position or why we discussed it, I think that that's still incredibly important, and that would be my only concern about that. I really think that's important. Secondarily to that, I do say that there are some things that need to be cleaned up. And honestly, I had hoped that the discussion we could have would be sort of, I think, as some of the public has mentioned, just sort of work through those differences together, those things to hash out a solution that works for everyone. There are some things that I'm quite not clear on, but I do think that we need to have some policies in place, and in no way attempting to hamper the administrative side of govern, of working and making things happen. I just think it's so crucially important that we, as a council and as an administration, work on those things. I do think that this document, and part of this document, maybe there's three months that we want to talk about or six months, I'm open to that. That's why I waited to listen and hear Ms. Cleland McGrath point out that we've had a number of changes happening within the city and the importance of the legislative side, which is council, to participate and sort of be stakeholders as well in those decisions. In no way do I think that it needs to imperil your decision as mayor on whom you think is appropriate for those positions. You know, I'm a big advocate of that, but I do think, though, that council's role as a legislative entity must be a stakeholder, and we've got to find a way to make that happen. And so I think as we discuss this resolution, I think that it's important that we find a way to codify it such that when we go forward, we don't hamper you as mayor or any other mayor to come after this, but at the same time, ensure that council's well abreast of what actions are being taken and are buy-in, get their buy-in on saying, believing that this is an appropriate thing. And I don't think that those two things are incompatible. I really do. So let's try to figure out how we do that. So, you know, I'm... So, you know, I'm open to any of the changes that we're talking about. I'm just not sure how we get there in this platform unless we agree line by line to say, "We're okay with that line, we're not okay with this one, we're okay with that line, we're not okay with this one," and then we come out with something that we're going to push forward. I'm not sure how we do that, but the only, the major concern that I have is, one, of communication, given everything that has happened that we've been reading in the paper, not just about the city, but about the other entities such as the port. There's reasons that we really need to double-check on some things, and that has nothing to do with your or the mayor's or the administrative side of anything. I really don't believe that. I'm hoping we can find a way where we both realize that it's really an issue of communication, and we got to figure out how we get there, because what obviously is being said by this document is that there's room for improvement, and we believe, or, you know, at least the proposal is, we believe that these are the things that will help us feel better about where we are and be more knowledgeable about where we want to go. Thank you.
Yeah, again, great points about moving forward, because I always like to move forward on things, whether I agree with them or not. And I think typically what we do is we remand something like that to a committee to work on, and then that's how we kind of communicate it out, now that it's obviously in front of the public. I think there are some areas that, you know, if all of council wants to weigh in on, you know, what they want in this ordinance or what they don't, whether they disagree with what the staff had in there, probably can send that all to staff and consolidate those as we, you know, take some time to answer some of those legal questions that came up as well. But over to council.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Carter.
I agree with Mr. Young that there should be some kind of policy, and there are valid points to the topics tonight, but the way it came forward and the rush to pass it through and working with the council for the last four years kind of leads me to believe that this is a shady, backhanded kind of power grab. And I think that we need to spend more time on it, to go over it, put it through a committee, talk about it more before we're rushing through things.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. So, the city currently has significant legal exposure due to some HR matters currently under third-party investigation. So there's a lot we can't talk about publicly or with each other, and this, some of this is a response to that. So we, I would be happy to talk about different aspects of this. I'm fine with six months. I don't know if I'm married to the idea of having the city engineer on the list, but I am absolutely committed to having a separate HR department with a separate director who doesn't have employees that can't go to the director. And to protect our city's liability and all of our 235-plus employees, that is a huge part of this. We are trying to protect people and the city.
Anybody else want to weigh in on the way forward?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
One of the bullets on the staff feedback slide was about the compensation line. The compensation line in the ordinance reads, "The compensation for each employee appointed officer is that established each year in the annual budget or salary ordinance of the The reason that's in there is because of RCW 35A 12020, which says the compensation of appointed officers shall be prescribed by ordinance. Just going down the list of items of staff feedback, I think that we have addressed through clarification in the revision that I circulated most of those. One other item was council notification changing immediately to timely. I think people understand immediately doesn't mean the second, but if we need further understanding there, timely is fine with me. Ms. Moulton suggested maybe we delete "meet informally with the appointed officer." I think it would be pretty unusual to actually do that, so, again, I would be okay deleting that. And then the final question is the interim length without council approval. And there's been discussion if we keep it at three or six months. I would point out, however, that under the statute, appointments of appointed officers are to be for an indefinite period. There really isn't statutory authority for an interim unless it's provided for by ordinance. So this would actually provide authority where it doesn't currently exist to have interim appointments. Now, you know, not inconsistent with past practice, but past practice was more or less without authority to do that. So I would propose that we move that forward with those changes. I think that's the path forward.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. Just to make sure I'm following, the points remaining of contention, whether that's three months or six months, and also, I guess, the discussion, I'm not sure if the ordinance can address it, is about the HR director being independent. Aside from those things, are there any other points? I guess, I guess I'm just sort of trying to pull counsel here, because I think Ms. Cleland McGrath's two major points was, one, about the independence of the HR director being, you know, an independent position, not under any other department head, other than, of course, the administration. And then secondarily to that, I think, I believe you argued, Ms. Cleland McGrath, for three months, although six months is normally okay, but you believe that three months is just as appropriate, given everything that has happened, you know, in the last couple of years at the city, in that there is a need for just clarity, and that has really nothing to do with, I believe, this mayor. I just think that the issue is of clarity and making sure that council and the public are very keenly aware of what's taking place, and we all have stakeholder buy-in. Beyond those things there, I think in Mr. Walters' last draft, he addressed many of those other concerns by the staff and department heads as to, you know, what their concerns were. So I just want to make sure that myself, as well as the public, that the two major points are about three or six months and the HR director. Am I missing something, Ms. Moulton? I saw your, I saw your microphone come off, so I'm open to any, I'm just trying to get clarity. So that will allow us to try to absolutely figure out, do we want to move forward? Do we want to ponder longer? What is it?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
So in addition to the independent HR director and department, also it's not having a person in the role of two appointed officers, so shrinking or combining of departments. So I would agree that that's part of it as well, in my understanding.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Couple of points. First of all, I take to heart the public comment about how this transpired over the last two weeks. It's not necessarily, the way it played out is not best practices by any means. I think there were a lot of moving pieces happening. I think that when this ordinance started, as Mr. Mackenzie correctly said, it was an opportunity to kind of clean up informal ways and codify status quo. And so when me as one of three council members brought it forward, we were just, to me, it was a pretty innocent way of saying, "Here's our directors, here's how we deal with interim directors." And like we have always done, here we confirm those, here's the list of folks that we actually, or positions we actually confirm. As things were moving around in those seven days or between council meetings, we were made aware that one of those appointed officers had gone away. And so suddenly, there seemed to be more contention because we were going away from status quo. And that's unfortunate. But I also know that it's been a challenge to get every personnel committee meeting scheduled and have attendance by the executive branch over the months. And so unfortunately, it's had to come out more publicly in this setting. But as Ms. Moulton said, and I think it's important when we start to talk, when there's some gray areas and some muddying waters that are happening right now, I think it is important that we acknowledge that the city's has been made aware of allegations of harassment against a protected class, and we have a responsibility to investigate it, and that investigation is going to be happening. Council doesn't have any authority other than that that report will be made available to the public when it's completed. But, yeah, I think that because of some, a number of moving pieces in the last month, we feel like this is, unfortunately, become contentious but incredibly important for our city, for our staff to protect them, for our departments to keep their integrity, and to make sure that when council is made aware of concerns or liabilities to the city, that we are taking proper steps to handle them in a responsible manner.
So I think that was to the sense of urgency of doing this. Do I understand that correctly, Ms. Cleland McGrath? The urgency of doing this ordinance without talking to me prior to presenting it to council?
Well, are we going to try to debate it now? I mean...
Well, no, you're trying to make a point about urgency.
I, this was something that had been being kind of talked about in the wings. It came to council, yeah. It was a sense of urgency, sure.
Okay, a sense of urgency based on an investigation that hasn't happened.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I wouldn't characterize that as, I'm going to say no, and I feel like you're sort of leading the way. I mean, no.
Again, so the reason I ask the urgency question is because I'm trying to help the council move this forward, and I'm trying to understand the urgency issue.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath, I think, was going to chime in, and then Mr. Walters.
I would say that it seems like council is fairly in agreement that we should move it forward. Three months or six months, yes. I wanted to actually have accurate information determining whether or not it should be three months or six months or some other length of an interim amount, interim length prior without having to come to council for continued approval. For the sake of moving this forward, I am fine with going to six months. I think that three months makes sense based on the last four years, but, I mean, I'm, that's, I'm not, that's not the hill I'm willing to, that I'm going to put my stake in.
Mr. Walters?
Throughout our discussion, I think I've identified four issues. One, list of appointed officers and any modifications to such list. Two is council notification changing immediately to timely. Three, delete meeting informally with the appointed officer, if that's what we want to do. And four, changing interim from three to six months. There are, of course, other things that staff identified, like maybe we want to be able to combine positions, but I haven't heard any support for that position. So I would propose that we move this forward now with any of those four items that council is inclined to change. I am inclined to change maybe only two of them. So I would, I would move to adopt the revision from November 5th with two changes. One, in 040A, change immediately to timely for notification, and in 040C, delete and meet informally with the appointed officer.
Mr. McDougal?
Just to clarify, does that mean six months or three months? Like, I, did the November 5th say six months?
The November 5th had three months, yeah. But the motion would be subject to further amendment if we wanted to debate individual components.
Got it.
Ms. Hubig?
Thank you. I would like, I agree with the recommendation on Section A, changing it to timely, and then getting rid of meeting informally with the appointed officer. And I do also want to explicitly say that as someone who in my day job works for an elected official but also works for the taxpayers, like, like it was mentioned during public comment, democracy is messy. And if I was someone who was interested in being an appointed officer within the city, I would feel a lot more secure personally if I knew that things like this were codified. So I know that a lot of this conversation has been around what our roles are or what code should be, but I really want us to make sure that we focus on keeping the people that are going to be serving in these positions that we're putting into code comfortable and happy, because they're the people that do, you know, all of the work for this city. And I just, I want to, I want to thank my fellow council members, I want to thank all of these people, you know, that have been named here, and everybody else that's put in time to increase this. For the comment on the three or six months, I could go either way. We might as well maybe say six, just to give it the benefit of the doubt, and consider that we can change it back to three. That's a thought that I have there.
A thought but not an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. A motion without a second means the motion dies.
May I?
I don't know what, I don't know what the timeframe is for that.
I was waiting for Ms. Hubig, whoops, Mayor Miller?
Yep, Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I was, I thought perhaps that Ms. Hubig was going to answer, so I was waiting for that. But I will second the motion with the, with the changes that Mr. Walters listed.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to approve ordinance 4062 with the changes to 040A, changing timely, immediate to timely, and the change to 040C, which I can't read my handwriting now, that was...
To delete "meet informally with the appointed officer."
Okay, thank you. Okay, so motion and a second, any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, can you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And being that there is no further business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night.